You've got the presentation, great. You've heard a couple of the slides already from Mr. Richard there. Martha Baker, I'm an RN and used to be the head nurse of the trauma intensive care until 2008 when the craziness hit Dade County and I have been doing the union president job full-time, out of demand. Missed my nurse job desperately. But as Mark said, the bargaining units for SEIU 1991, I think you heard, the nurses, the doctors, and the other healthcare professionals. OC's doing the slides for me on page three here. The issue at impasse is the same as you've heard all day long, stopping the 5%. I've heard a few people say giving back, there's no giving back, we're asking to just stop. Just let me clarify that. It's just stop the 5%. You're going to hear three things. The summary of the concessions, which you can probably tell me at this point, and number two will be the famous Dwayne Fitch that you heard Manny talk so much about, and then the impact of the concession from a few of our healthcare workers in the trenches. On page five, there was our concessions were grouped together in two categories. Obviously, those that happened first under Mayor Alvarez in 2010 where we gave the 5% concession, and then the 5% in other. So there was a 10% given in 2010. And then the second group of concessions on page seven, OC, is the March 2012 concessions. And that's where every county employee gave another 11%. Cut the pie the way we would, but the five kept going from 10. The second five was one year only, and in 2012, we all gave another 11%. So now we're going with a consistent 16%. So page seven is showing you the March 12 concessions. This is a three-page process here. Everyone sort of looks the same with the continuation of the 5%. The suspension of merit and step at Jackson. Suspension of flex pay. Suspension of the educational days for nurses. Suspension of HMO dollars. On page eight, six furlough days. Major changes to the pension, including the 3% contribution. Elimination of daily overtime. Suspension of holiday administrative day. Decrease of five PL days for 2012. And on page nine, we too had an addition to that 16%, 1,000 layoffs. So those layoffs were not taken into our percentage given. Those layoffs were in addition to the 16%. That was 600 for SEIU. 400 of those nurses laid off were told if you want a job, you can come back and have it, but it's part-time. And that's the 400 clinical staff nurses who came back to work part-time because they love Jackson. There was a change in the definition of full-time status at Jackson. Instead of getting 80 hours, a little over 80 hours of paycheck, the new full-time definition would be 72 hours. And I frequently ask our managers, how many of you would like to work for 72 hours of paycheck? So 72-hour was the new norm for a full-time nurse, losing a shift of pay in addition to the 16%. And the bottom of page nine shows our promise to management, and that's when we first engaged Mr. Fitch, a healthcare consultant, CFO, and CPA, to help us at Jackson. If we were going to give over $100 million a year, we wanted to make sure we watched it. And we hired a healthcare consultant from Chicago who had recently helped turn around Cook County. Not just any consultant, someone who was big into public hospitals with a mission like ours. And we promised to earn another $15 million at least each year, 12, 13, and 14, and if we didn't, we would pay the piper. We're proud to say we've made that and more. And it's a, I'm impressed to hear the theme all day long about so many workers. The maintenance guy from 291 is just overwhelming his expertise in his niche and how he can save hundreds of thousands of dollars if managements would respect their workers and care enough to listen. There's millions of dollars to be saved in Dade County, as we've heard today. Anyway, we came through on our promise to make 15 million a year, and we've done that and more. Page 10 is a summary. The bottom line is the biggie in red. Total concessions made by SEIU nurses, doctors, and healthcare professionals since 2010 and ongoing until September of 2014, we're talking $186 million. We are asking for the 5% to stop. Look at your next slide. That's the value of the 5% stopping. We're asking out of that 186 million that you stop taking 10 million. This is a small sliver of the concessionary pie. Too often, we think that we're only given the 5%. We're not only given the 5%. We are asking that you stop taking 10 million of the 186 million for 2014. All right. We finally got to number two here, and you're going to get to hear from the famous Dwayne Fitch. Dwayne, come on up.
I'm almost afraid to touch anything on this side.
We've got plenty of nurses and doctors here if you need us.
If I go down, I know where to go, that's for sure. Thank you, Martha, and good afternoon, Chairperson and county commissioners. My name is Dwayne Fitch, and I hope I only have to live up to half of the billing. That has been kind of previewed here this afternoon. I want to show you something that you've already seen. This is very small, but it's in your handout. This is Jackson's budget as presented in the county format that you received and subsequently adopted in July of 2013. Before I get too deep into my presentation, Jackson is blessed with a wonderful financial staff led by Mark Knight and Carlos Magoya, and the financial performance there has been very much improved, as has been noted many, many times. And the fiscal year 2014 budget is a reflection of that. So this budget, as you've seen, like I said, it's been approved and adopted by the county. It is balanced according to the county ordinance. And the county format, which is different than a generally accepted accounting principal format, really establishes Jackson's spending limit by taking the beginning cash balance and adding the total revenue for fiscal year 2014, and that really establishes their spending threshold. To kind of guide you through the numbers there, you can see that in this version, which was again submitted in July, the beginning of the year cash carryforward was about $80.3 million. So, you know, that was part and parcel of establishing the spending limit of about $1.6 billion that you can see on that slide. In truth, because of good results largely fueled by employee concessions and other activities at Jackson, the end of the year cash balance was not 80.3 million as was predicated there. It was actually about 105 million. So that was the difference between the September 30 actual ending balance and what they projected in July, again, due to good performance by Jackson, which is very favorable for many, many constituencies. If you would move to the next one. So as Manny and others have said, you know, I want to present for your consideration one series of changes that can be made to that original budget, which at the end would still result in a budget that is balanced and consistent with the county requirements. And I'm going to walk you through what the changes are, and then I will show them to you as well. So this one example is adjust the beginning balance carryover to actual. So change that 80 million to the 105 million, which is done in that subsequent slide that I will show you. Adjust the operating expenses by 18 million to reflect the elimination of the employee contribution to healthcare. That 18 million reflects all worker groups at Jackson, not just SEIU, not just AFSCME, but all of them. And then we adjust the ending cash carryover balance. And when you take those three steps, you actually end up with about $6.7 million greater in ending cash balance than what was originally submitted and adopted by the county. So let's move to the next page, OC, and I will once again kind of show you this on this format. This is a duplication of the county format, and basically, we've done the things that I have outlined, that I've just outlined. The cash carryforward is now 105. That ups the spending limit to about $1.6 billion. I've increased those operating expenses by the 18 million that would be required for Jackson to end the 5% employee contribution. And then you end up with an ending cash balance, as I said, that's about $7 million or so greater than what was originally presented to the county. So in shorthand, we're simply taking the 25 million excess that was, excess from the original projections and reapportioning about 18 million of that to cease the 5% and still have Jackson with a higher cash balance. Again, all other factors remaining the same. One thing we know about budgets is all other factors do not remain the same. So Jackson leadership and the PHT will undoubtedly have to respond to both positive and negative issues that will occur in fiscal year 14. This is simply taking that one variable and running it through this particular, this particular presentation, which again, shows that Jackson can fund the 18 million and still have $6.7 million more in ending cash balance than they originally provided to the county and which the county adopted. Let's move to the next. This, I just write it out, so I won't need to go through it again. It's simply saying what I just said. So if you could go to the next one, OC. So there's a second alternative. As Mark Richard alluded to last month, the county voters overwhelmingly approved a bond offering that supports the strategic mission of Jackson, as well as some infrastructure development, much-needed infrastructure development, as we all know. Carlos Magoya and his team deserve a lot of credit for this major accomplishment. It is truly a game changer for Jackson and the entire Miami-Dade community. Wisely, I would say, prior to the approval of the $800 million bond deal, Jackson apportioned about $40 million of its fiscal year 2014 budget for capital expenditures. This was prior to learning that the county would indeed support the bond referendum. So if we adjust the beginning cash balance to the 105, like we talked about before, if we reduce the $40 million that was going to be funded organically by operations and remove that down to 18, that provides us with the liquidity and the ability to fund the contribution to healthcare, the reinstatement of the contribution to healthcare, and still end up with the full $25 million in excess that I talked about earlier. So if we show that in the numerical presentation, again, a couple of moving parts here, we take the beginning cash balance, we change it from 80 to 105, we change the, it's easier for me to read it up here, by the way. You know, we changed the depreciation, kind of organically funded capital from 40 million down to 22, and we redistribute that 18 million into operating expenses in order to absorb the restatement of the 5%. And under this kind of a modeling, the ending cash balance would be actually $25 million than what was originally submitted and accepted and adopted by the county. These are just two ways of approaching this issue that end up where Jackson continues to meet and exceed the requirements of the county. The organic Jackson team could undoubtedly, with their ingenuity and skill, come up with other ways to do it. So, you know, we feel that we presented a pretty good case to illustrate that there certainly are opportunities for Jackson to cease the 5% employee contribution without instilling financial harm on the organization. With that, I will conclude my presentation and have you pick it back up.
Great. Thanks, Dwayne. And I'm going to zoom on here so we can get done, and a couple of our nurses are going to share with you some of their experiences in the trenches. I've got childcare issues I've got to get to. So I'm going to ask our nurses and our social worker to come up and stand with me at the other podium so we can get through this. And I'm going to talk about the impact of the concessions in addition to the finances. And when you look at, where's this?
Ms. Baker, one second, because I think that before you move on, there's a question.
Before I have their presentations, there are two issues that I'm mindful of from the previous negotiations that were spoken to about today, and I want a better understanding. And maybe it's you, maybe it's Mr. Richards, or the gentleman, Mr. Nun. 4%, when everybody else had it bumped up and then they had it rebated, your union didn't have that 4% drop down. When it was proposed to go up to 9, you went up to 9, everybody else got reduced back to 5.
No. What happened was, at Jackson, we did exactly what at the time Mayor Alvarez asked to do. Give a 5%, you know, in the name of healthcare, and do a 5% in another way. We did not fight on that. We cut the pie and gave another 5 on top of the 5. Okay? This lasted one year, and then this continued. In 2012, we did the 11%. When the rest of the county was getting back, I think they came to you on the second five, and you said do four. And that was for one year. You imposed for one year. Then in that October of, what would that have been, 11 or 12, they got it back? Yeah.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, on that one-year concession, that it was a double up, Jackson did it too, but didn't get it back.
Right.
Is that correct? So you're still at that double up?
Well...
Or has it been absolved now?
It's, I would say, for the sake of the 5% discussion today, to not distract you, it's been absolved.
Yeah, but...
It's, we weren't...
...exceptional hardship. Mr. Richard, is that different?
Can I do one thing?
And then, one last thing. You also sent me a large bulletin of an entire population of workers at Jackson and our health system that never had the 5%. Forget about the double up or the 11%, never got it. It was pages and pages of people, single space. What's inequity there? That, I think it was called management or something, that never got the 5%. It's floating around someplace in management here.
Four years' management.
Where's the fairness?
Yeah. That was the, that was the 100, 200 company at Jackson, two 10s that didn't, that, under Dr. Worldon's leadership, never gave the 5%. Never had a 5% taken from their paycheck. No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Because when everyone says equal across the board, it seemed like disproportionately yours was unequal, and even amongst yourself unequal. Okay, thanks.
Right. And the only reason I'm rushing you is because I've got, one of my nurses has to get out of here by 5:00 to go get her child. So if you have questions after they do their presentation, be glad to revisit it. Okay. So I want to talk about the impact of the concessions. In the nursing workforce and in the healthcare workforce, I think there's market pressures that you need to be aware of. And OC, is this going to make it? There we go. So when Dwayne finished his report, I thought this slide was appropriate. Healthcare Finance article that was published, "The Days of Wine and Roses for Jackson Health System," because with that bond passing and with our management improving at Jackson and getting this now the second year in the black, this was "Days of Wine and Roses for Jackson Health System." But quite frankly, even though the finances are looking better and the bond is a wonderful thing, you know, the concessions are still going on at Jackson. They have not stopped yet. And so the employees are not feeling wine and roses at Jackson. And that's what I want you to hear, is that these employees are not feeling wine and roses. Now, our workforce is a little different. There's a nursing shortage in this whole country, some would argue in the world. And, you know, that's, these employees are being hit by that, and it's hurting us. On this next slide, OC, go to page 22 if you would. This is just one example of a nurse who was hired as a new nurse in 2010 for $24.77. If you follow the blue line, had she gotten, no, there's no extra monies in there, that's what would have happened on a normal course, that nurses usually at the younger end of the scale get a raise every year, and they would be making somewhere after almost four years, $30 to save lives instead of 24. But in today's, you know, the last four years, for these new nurses who were hired in 2010, alls they've known is the darkest days in the nursing profession. They've never seen a raise. If you look at their $24.77, they're not yet making that. They're still back at, realistically, with the concessions, $22.42. And this is, you know, perhaps the mouth of the dragon there, but they are taking a big hit. And these are nurses, many of them, the ones we are hiring are new graduates. The majority of them are new graduates. As you see going across that line, these nurses are making after nearly, you know, three and a half years, way below what they were told they were making, right? When they come in at $24.77, minus the 5% is that first big drop. There's a little bit of blip up with the 3% in July of '11, but then there was the 3% give-back to the pension, and ever since then, it's been takeaways and flat on salaries. After three and a half years, a nurse who normally would have been making $30 is still making with that 3% in realistic wages, 25 bucks. And the nurse they're training, with no experience, and they have three and a half, they are making the same hourly wage. We are pushing our younger nurses out the door. Next slide. So over the last 44 months, right, the concessions they've given individually, with all the education days, counting everything we gave, not just money, but 40 grand for the one employee who was the new nurse, fresh out of nursing school, this is her first experience in the workforce. On page 24, we look back, use management's numbers. How many of the nurses hired in 2010 left since then? 49% have left. How many of the nurses hired in 2011 are still here? 43% left. How many of the nurses hired in 2012 are still here? 26% left. They're coming here, they can't believe this, they're training nurses, earning the same wage for three and a half years, giving 5% of their paycheck, hearing of all these benefits that we don't get, and they're leaving. We're training them, and they're leaving. Mark was in Baptist, I know he doesn't mind me sharing. I don't know why I didn't come to Jackson, but he went to Baptist, and all of us at Jackson had to help him get out of Baptist. But anyway, he talked to the manager there, and she said, "We're not hiring new grads. We're getting all the Jackson well-trained nurses. They're flocking to us. We're paying for their education, and we're pushing them out the door. It is not a good business model to stifle the wage of a new nurse." What does it cost on the next slide? Conservatively, 1.3x their salary to turn them over. If we're hiring 400 nurses, we're losing 200, and we're paying the millions of dollars to train them for our competitors. Next slide. This is demographics in Florida. This is what the train wreck in nursing is. They're all old, like me. They're all over 50. Look at the numbers. Under 30, in this whole state, 7.7 nurses are under 30. Guess what we're doing to our under 30 nurses? Kicking them out the door as fast as we can train them. We're not, we've got to turn those steps back on, we've got to start giving raises again, you've got to give back the 5%. We're going to build beautiful buildings with $830 million, and we're going to be scrounging for nurses to staff those buildings. Next slide. We need our young nurses badly. They're our future at Jackson, they're our next decade. That's the nightmare in nursing, as over half of us are over 50 every decade, a large percent of us retire, and we've only got 10% back there to come in, 7% are under the age of 30. We've got to treat them precious, preciously, we've got to keep them. We can't stifle their wages. And this is, you know, if we didn't need nurses, and we were okay, and those layoffs were okay, why are we paying $33 million in overtime and agency in one year? $33 million, .6 in one year for agency and overtime. And that's not all just nursing staff, that's techs, that's everybody, but 33 million. I'm told the nurses are about 70% of that 33 million. Clearly, the majority. 33 million in overtime. Okay. I need to get Ms. Tisdall up here to the next microphone, please, and introduce yourself to these wonderful commissioners.
Good afternoon. My name is Latasha Tisdall. I'm one of the new nurses that she's been referring to. Not new to Jackson, I've been there almost 13 years. A little over a year as a nurse. I actually, I'm going to first start out by saying that I do love working for Jackson. I'm not here to bash Jackson whatsoever. I started in medical records as a clerk. I then went to Jackson's radiology school and became an x-ray tech while working, while in school as for x-ray tech, I worked in transportation. So I've pretty much been in every department in Jackson that you can think of. I did x-ray tech for about seven or eight years and decided that I wanted to go back and do nursing. Like I said, I was one of the new nurses that started last year, August 2012. It was, I was one of six. And I'm sad to say that I'm the only one left in the department. And I maybe should not be saying this, but I do have an interview for another facility on Monday, considering leaving for the same reason that the other nurses left. It is way too stressful. I work in the emergency department. We care for sometimes seven or eight patients at one time, and that, to me, is a dangerous environment. I shouldn't have to come to work and be stressed out or worried about having my license that I've worked so hard for taken away from me. It is already bad enough that we have more than the 5% taken away from us, but it's just the environment altogether. And I'm also one of the persons that had to give up my home last year. I did a deed in lieu of foreclosure. I was 25 years old when I bought my house, on my own, with God's help, of course, and I was proud of that. And I had to give that back, and I'm a single mom. I had to downsize this year to a one-bedroom, just like someone else mentioned, me and my daughter in a one-bedroom, and that should have never have happened. So something's got to give. Something's got to give, because what you're doing, just like Martha said, is you're, Jackson, I will say, has the best nurses and doctors hands down. I may be a little bit biased by saying that, but we have the best nurses and doctors hands down. And just like LeBron did in taking his talents to Miami, what you're doing is creating the best nurses and doctors, and they're going to take their talents elsewhere. So something's got to give. And all I'm asking, just like everyone up here that has come up here has asked for, is to honor the contract and give back the 5%. Thank you.
My name is Anne. My address is 601 Ivy Street Road, apartment 405, Miami, Florida. I'm an RN. I work in the emergency room at Jackson North. I've been a nurse for five years. I was hired in December of 2008, right before everything started collapsing. I haven't had a raise. For about three years, there was no raises, plus a 5% cut. So right now, I'm a five-years-experienced nurse making just as much as a brand-new nurse is making right now. And in the five years, things have changed. I have a two-year-old boy, and there are expenses. My son is two and a half, and he's not talking, and I need to take him to speech therapy, I need to take him to occupational therapy, and I work night shift. So I also need a sitter. I'm a single mother. So 5% represent a lot. It's not just a number, it's a lot more than a number. It's a dream. I send money back to my elderly father in Haiti and daycare. I want to go back to school to get my bachelor degree. I want to buy a home, other things that I need to do. And so if you could please fly in your heart to stop taking the 5%. And so if you could please fly in your heart to stop taking the 5%. We work really hard. I don't know if you guys ever been to the emergency room at Jackson? It's crazy, it's back. We work very hard, and all day, all I hear all night is, we're not appreciated, everybody's depressed, the spirit is very low. Everybody's walking around just complaining, and we want, just want to feel appreciated just a little bit. So thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Sosa and honorable commissioners. My name is Jeanette Garcia. My name is Jeanette Garcia, and I am a social work case manager at Jackson Memorial Hospital. I work with special populations in the Care and Treatment Network. In 1998, I decided to move to Florida because I wanted a white house with a white picket fence. I wanted to live in paradise. So I moved down here, took me two years to get on my feet, and then I was fortunate to find employment with Jackson Memorial Hospital. I have 20 years' experience working in the helping profession. I have been at Jackson, actually, seven years, almost eight. I am privileged today in bringing my message and the message of my coworkers of hardship. Kind of short, sorry. I'd like to go back three years, when the rug was pulled right under our feet. I remember when the changes began at Jackson, we had a new CEO come in, and we faced many changes for the better. And then I remember one fine day in November, it's ironic, it's three years later, and it's right around the same time, when we received that email regarding the furloughs. We had to take those days off and not get paid, Christmas was around the corner, and I have 10 grandkids, so hello, dollar store. Then after that, it's real, it may sound funny, but, you know, when you're used to living a certain way, and then all of a sudden, you know, your life is flipped upside down, especially if you have grandkids or children, it's very painful. So I had to make many changes. So the layoffs also were very, very difficult. All of a sudden, our coworkers that we've been collaborating with and working side-by-side with, they were no longer there, they were gone, and that was very hurtful. All of a sudden, here I was with a workload triple the size, but that was okay because my commitment to my profession and what I do at Jackson is most important. So I suffered, I went into a depression, and I remember coming to work every day, and no one can tell because we cannot come to work looking depressed. We come to do our job, and at the same time, patients were also feeling the heat. Patients were waiting longer, patients, we had shortage of staff, and so, as I previously said, the workload increased and made things a little more difficult. But still, we remained committed to our mission of public health and community first. I am the face of my community. I am not only a citizen and a resident of Miami-Dade County and a voter, but I am the face. If you see me, then you see the patients at Jackson, and that's why I love working there. Public health is my passion. I'm nervous too, excuse me. So we have stood very firm, and we ask you to take into consideration all the stories that you've heard today. And just that someone had mentioned how embarrassed they were to talk about an eviction that they have received. I would like to talk to you about the embarrassment I had when I had to go and get. I paid the advance. Never in my life, in my 20 years as a professional, have I ever succumbed to that. I'm actually one mortgage behind since three years ago, trying to catch up. I am single, I have a mortgage, I have a car payment, I have student loans and $90,000 in debt. So all I ask is that you take all these things into consideration, put yourself in my shoes, and return our 5%. And one thing I was thinking while I was sitting down, you know, we're going to take this 5% and we're going to just put it right back into the community. Imagine all these healthcare workers and professionals that are going through foreclosures, are losing their cars, are going through all these hardships. What does that say about our community? We're supposed to keep our community strong. This is paradise, right? So please, again, thank you for your time, and there was a lot more I wanted to say, but I'm just so emotionally overcome by everything I've heard today, that again, in closing, I ask that you take everything into consideration and put yourself in our shoes. Thank you.
And Jeanette, I hope, well, I think, Jeanette, it's interesting, 20 years in the healthcare profession as a social worker, and working on her second master's degree, and she's making $49,000 a year, and she's, that's before the 5%. So, you know, you take away the 2,500 a year she's paying in the 5%, and the other 11% in concessions, you know, she's down there. And this is, this is, you know, I think, many of you may think that everyone at Jackson is high-paid workers. There's several low-paid workers throughout this entire county that are getting hit, obviously, the hardest. And when I talked about the younger nurses, those nurses, someone like me who's maxed out and will never get another step raise at Jackson, I'm giving my 5% and the 11%. Those other people who are losing their step raises every year are giving up to 25%, 30% more than me, when they're at the younger end of this pay scale. So it's, you know, this is a crazy place we've gotten into. Hopefully, we're on our way up and out, and hopefully, it's in your hearts and your minds today to return, nope, wrong word, stop the 5% January 1. And I'm going to hand it over to Mark Richards to close up.
Thank you. So we want to ask you to consider the evidence that for 33 years, every single employee group has been treated, created and treated the same, and today would be the break of that for the first time in 30, over 30 years. We would ask you to look at the promise that was made to us that this was temporary, and we would ask you to look at...